Yeah, they hope their attitude changed when they got to the start of that. Yeah, also they have to deal with it. Right, broke it out now or never really had to deal with it.
It's not my deal.
Any other word? Our legislative leaders.
Let's begin. To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which sustains, one nation under God, indivisible, with every dignity and justice for all.
Okay, first order of business. There are two, I have two proxies. I have the proxy for David Welchel and I have the proxy for Jan Sims. If she is unable to zoom in and I don't.
No, she has.
Oh, there she is.
Right now.
Good. Good deal. Okay, first order of business, there are no changes or additions. And now we're celebrating success.
Thank you. Is Gary Davis out there, please? If you could come into the boardroom. And we'll have Mike Murray come in just after Gary comes in. Come on up, Gary, come on up. And Paul, come up as well. Let you do the presentation here.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah.
Face that camera right there or turn and face the camera. This is Gary Davis, everybody. On Saturday, August 15th, on a busy morning at Brittany, Mary Silvias gathered all her courage and decided to finally play golf. She arrived at the front door of the Metfield Golf Complex looking lost, frazzled, and a bit scared. Gary met her at the door as she was struggling trying to get her golf bag into the golf shop and escorted her to the back drop. This is when she revealed that she was a novice to golf and had no idea what she was doing. Gary took the time to ease her fears and explained to her all she needed to know about getting onto the course and enjoying herself. As she was going to her cart, he loaded her golf bag for her and sent her on her way. She had such a great time on the course and felt so special in the check-in process that she took time to document her experience on the Bella Vista Neighbors Facebook page. Here's the quote. "He treated me like I was Jack Nicklaus," she wrote on the page and posted a photo. Her post was a hit and she received numerous invitations from other women to play golf. She came back the next day and has become a regular. Paul nominated Gary and this is his write-up for you, Gary, so we appreciate it, Paul. Here's what Paul had to say. "I've used Gary's handling of this experience to teach other staff how we never know who is at our counter and what their level of anxiety might be. Treat each person like it's their first time and like they're special and you can never go wrong." Thank you, Gary, we appreciate you. Dedicated service.
Can you send Mike Murray in? Thank you.
Paul, were you with us? Paul, were you with your peers out there?
Sorry?
When we were calling for you, were you your?
I didn't at first.
You did at first. Thank you.
Come on down, Mike. Right down here if you would.
He's sweet here, don't he?
Yes.
His wife wants to see this.
Awesome. Very good. There you go, Bruce, I'll let you be honors.
Mike regularly goes above and beyond by assisting BB Bar and Grill in keeping their patio area clean by blowing it off of debris on a regular basis. He also blows off the paths and sidewalks behind the country club as well. Recently, Mike took it upon himself to clear all the trash bags that accumulated on the path behind the dumpster at the country club. This was no small task as all the bags were full of cans and bottles and had been sitting there for weeks. It was also hot outside, which made the job even more daunting. He stacked the piles that had appeared over several days. In two days, all of the bags were gone and the space was so clean with no evidence that there had been anything there. Mike, we appreciate your dedicated service to the POA. Thank you so much for all that you do for us.
Congratulations.
At last month's board meeting, we talked about the decision or the recommendation from the charitable giving committee regarding the recipients for the $25,000, in total, $25,000 that would be given out. And in your board packet today, you'll see some very nice letters. One from the Bella Vista Library, one from the Bella Vista Foundation, the Animal Shelter, and the Women's Chorus. There was a number of other charities that also received a check, but these four took the time to send in a thank you letter and we thought it would be nice to share those with the board. Also, on a different subject completely, wanted to remind everybody that, everybody that is viewing from home, that you can go on to the POA's website and you can click on the packet, the big thick packet, and you can go through and follow along. And as we're going, as we're covering different items, we'll try and mention what page we're on. That was it.
Okay, the approval of the minutes, the August 27th, board director's regular meeting. Do I hear a motion to approve?
No.
A second? Any discussion? Hearing none? Take a vote, all votes in favor?
Aye.
Jan says yes.
Aye.
There we go. The next item on page 14, the September 17th Board Work Session. This passed a week ago. Do I hear a motion to approve? Jerry Baron, second?
Second.
Second from Mary. Any discussion? No discussion. Take a vote, all votes in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All ayes. Okay. Joint Advisory Committee Reports. If you're following along, should start on page 17 with the Lakes Advisory Committee. Is there a member here to report? There we go.
Good evening. I'm Kelly Austin with the Lakes Committee and we have several things going on. From all the reports, our lake activities really up this year. Very busy with boat registrations and activity on the water. This coming winter, Lake Rayburn is going to be the one that's drawn down for repairs. So that normally happens, I think, at the end of November and last through February normally. We've had some issues with our fish cleaning stations being left pretty messy and we have volunteers that inspect those each month a couple of times. And so we're having them focus on those and trying to keep those clean. If they see an issue, they let the lakes employees know that and they can get around cleaning those up. And lastly, we just started doing our second phase of wake boat testing. And we had a bunch of boats and volunteers come out about the first week of September out to Lockloman and we ran a bunch of tests. Rick Echols and his folks had cameras and measuring sticks and things out there to take those measurements and now they've taken those back into their boat station and they're composing those to see what kind of results we can tell from, you know, what a wake boat at 200 feet versus a pontoon boat and a fishing boat, what those kind of wakes look like when they reach the shore. So that's the main stuff going on right now. Any questions?
Thank you, Kelly.
Okay, thank y'all.
Next up is Recreation.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Chris Stockman. I'm with the Recreation Committee. And this is our notes. We met last on September 14th. And generally, all our amenities are reported in good condition with good membership activity. Here are some highlights from some of the observations made by the committee members. Over at the Lockloman Recreation Complex, there was a couple of minor maintenance items that were reported, but immediate action was taken. At Blowing Springs Park, they noted the new grass was planted along the Razorback Greenway Trail Extension and that the print of campsites and bathrooms are now open. At Tyree Park, some trash cans have become unserviceable, so we noted them for replacement. Over at Branchwood, playground equipment is reopened and there are some signs letting the kids know and parents know to play at your own risk because of the pandemic. At Lorden Hall, the pool continued good use after the Labor Day holiday. Fitness classes are being added, but the larger groups restricted by the pandemic are expressing anxiousness to get back to doing their thing. I guess I'll have to be a little bit more patient for a while, unfortunately, do the best we can. The tennis complex there is getting a lot of use in the evenings. Over at the gun ranges, we noted that landscaping work appears to be close to completion and they're getting ready for a big tournament in the coming weeks. At Metfield Complex, fitness center and playground are reopened. Folks aren't happy about that. The meet and greet was held via Zoom on August 12th and there was 30 attendees from states all over the region and we received good feedback about that session. Moving over to some of the new business. Joan Globcinski reported on a few projects proposed for the 2021 budget and these are all listed in the formal notes section by Lighton. I think there are six of them. And the committee has taken an action to review and discuss them and provide feedback to Joan in the coming days, by the end of the month. So we'll hear about those next month at this time again, I'm sure. We have a few staff reports at the Recreation Committee meeting. Tom Judson basically reviewed positive trends for numbers with guest passes, boat registrations, and restaurants. Also mentioned the introduction of the POA smartphone app, which is being sent out for preliminary trials now. Rick Echols mentioned that equalized sampling at all the lakes and beach areas determined to be safe and will be stocking blue and channel catfish. 2021 budget item will include replacement and movement of the dog park that was previously destroyed by flooding. And finally, John Urquhart reported attendance at the gun range is more than doubled in August, year over year from previous August, and they're operating typically at about half capacity right now. All gun range officers and workers receive training to become certified or recertified on safety as well. So that's it. Our next meeting is going to be next month, October 12th, at 4pm. And if there's any questions, I'll take those. Thank you.
No, thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you, Chris. The next report will be on golf. I believe Tom is going to present that one.
We weren't able to have a representative from the Golf Committee attend. A couple of things, Keith covered how they've been going through and getting trees with hanging branches trimmed up so we don't have a hazard. The waterfall on number nine at Highlands was repaired by the Friends of Highlands with Mark Deal and his team, and we thank everybody for their participation. Darrell provided a great report. Rounds are up by 15,300 over prior year, which is a 13.5% increase. It's been many, many years, maybe even a decade, since we last mentioned that golf rounds were up. Member round play made up 10,500 of that. With annual, so member pay-as-you-play rounds were 10,500. Member annuals made up the 1,600 and non-members made up 3,300 of that 15,300 increase. And we're definitely seeing a large increase in rounds at Brittany as a result of the 2020 plan setup where green fees are free if you have an activity card. We will continue with the tee times through October. The golf group leaders have been notified. Also, there is going to be a recognition plaque added to number 12 at the country club for Jake Grasnick. Jake has been maintaining the flower beds for many, many years. I can also say on a personal account, when we are renovating the Scottsdale Golf Course and Clubhouse, I remember seeing Jake every single day in work clothes, 60 straight days. The commitment of Jake is just outstanding and so there's going to be a nice plaque added there because his efforts are much appreciated. And then there's a brief conversation regarding tee times versus shotguns for the future and the Golf Committee is seeking input and will be discussing this topic at greater length at their next meeting. And that's the golf report.
Okay, thank you. Next item, financial reports. Tom and Stacy, I believe?
Yep. And I'm going to share the screen right now.
Can you hear me? So I'm Stacy Higgins, I'm the controller, and I'll walk you through some of the financials. So just as a reminder that our financials are online, so you can go out to the website. At any point in time, I go back through the financials. We kind of go through them fast here, so feel free to go back and look through them at your leisure. So the first slide we'll talk about is the POA and some key financial performance on it. So the POA gross profit year-to-date versus budget is down 172,000. But I'd like to point out that last month, if you look at the same slide, we were actually down 379,000. So we're actually up about $200,000 this month. We had a great August, so we're over budget by $200,000 for the month of August. Our gross profit year-over-year is down 739,000 and that's due to the cell tower sale that we had last year. That cell tower sale was actually, I gotta pull this off. Yeah. Was actually 1.1 million. I think I'm far enough away from everybody that I can breathe when I do this. It was actually 1.1 million. So if you compare that to this year, we're actually better than what we were last year if you take that piece of it out. Our largest gross profit variances to budget is, FMB, of course, is still struggling. They're down 221,000 year-over-year, or year-to-date, excuse me, and that is due to COVID. But I did want to point out that the restaurants did really well in August. So they, or FMB in total, did really well in August. They actually only missed their gross profit budget by $7,000 and they only missed their revenue budget by 16,000. So given the constraints of COVID and all the challenges, they really had a good August. And then general income is down by 133,000 and that's basically the refunds from the 2020 plan got booked there. From a revenue standpoint, so some of the risks that we have right now, the POA overall revenue is down 322, but like I said, we gained 200,000 just in the month of August. So if you look back, it was over 500 last month. Our facility fees are down year-to-date 61,000, obviously due to COVID. Annual green fees are down 47,000, but again, they were 5,000 over budget in August. And our pro shop merchandise is still down 34,000, but they were also up 15,000 over budget in August. So some of the other wins that we had were boat registration and rental are up 94,000 year-to-date. Our rebate, we got a rebate from Carol Electric of 80,000. And then we had green fees, guest and member services, up 161,000 year-to-date. So I would be remiss not to mention golf because golf had an outstanding August. They are up $100,000 over budget for the month of August and over 300,000 compared to last year. So just a great month for the POA. Next. So now let's talk a little bit about expenses. So the POA has been managing their expenses very well through the month of August. Worse than budget, we have bad debt. So we talked a little bit about this last month and our bad debt is up 25,000 and that's really a result of COVID. If you look at our balance sheet, our receivables are also up and it's just from trying to work with our members and trying to put in payment plans and things. But as some of those accounts age, it obviously is going to drive our bad debt up. And then also, we had the irrigation pump station equipment of 54,000 and it was a lightning and pump issue earlier in the year at Dogwood. Better than budget is just about everything else. Salaries and employee benefits at 608,000, supplies at 70, maintenance and repairs at 99, and utilities at 81. So for the month, we're actually over budget by about $50,000. But that, or excuse me, not 50,000. Huh? Okay, 30,000. But that was really planned expenses because we knew that we had some repairs and things that had been delayed earlier in the year and so we're seeing some of that stuff come in now. So, but we're still a million dollars under budget for expenses overall. So still a great, great year-to-date number. Next. So some of the other key financial performances, EBITDA, we talk a lot about EBITDA and it's better than budget by 887,000 and this is attributed to the management of expenses over the entire year by all departments. Expenses are under budget, like I just said, by 1.1 million year-to-date. And then our 2019 expenses, just as a reminder, we got the Trafalgar fire in there. So if the numbers look a little funny, you know that's what's driving it. The middle slide at the top is just kind of a snapshot of the numbers that I've been talking about, so I won't really spend any time on that. But I will point out that salary and wages are better than budget, both year-to-date and over prior year, both employee benefits and the salaries and wages. So. And then the two charts at the bottom really are just kind of an example of the stuff we've been talking about. You can kind of see where last year's numbers were on the graph compared to this year and compared to budget, so. So now I'll talk about water. And again, just a reminder that you can see our financial reports on the website. So if I went too fast and you have additional questions, you can always go out and review those on the website after the board meeting. So talking about water, water also had a great August. So year-to-date versus budget, they're at 977,000 and year-over-year, they're at 1.2 million. Our water sales are at 446,000 year-to-date and they had 157,000 just in the month of August. New connections were 256,000 year-to-date with 25,000 of that being in August as well. Really no risks from a revenue standpoint. They're just having a great August or a great year. And from wins, we have water sales are at 5.9 million year-to-date and we're still carrying a 72% margin, which is up from 68 last year. They're attributing that mainly to the new ion water program that we have that will detect the leaks earlier and 68.3 million gallons of water sold, so. Looking at water's expenses, worse than budget, we have supplies, water installation of 99,000 and maintenance and repairs and water distribution equipment of 30,000. Both of these overages are really attributed to the increase in water sales. And then better than budget, again, kind of like the POA is everything else. We have salaries and employee benefits, fuel and oil, membership and training and credit card fees. So really, you can see all the different colors in the boxes and you can see this year compared to last year and just kind of give you an idea of kind of where we're at on each of the different categories. So let's talk about some key financial indicators for water. EBITDA is better than budget year-to-date by 910,000 and better than last year by 960. I was telling Tom today, I think I'm going to have to change my chart because I'm going to run out of space with their EBITDA number. And this again is attributed to the increase in water sales year-to-date of 446,000. They're carrying a margin of 72% and then their expenses are right in line. So just a great year. Expenses are slightly under budget in August by about 16,000 and they're over year-to-date by 67,000, but this again is attributed to the water system installations we just talked about. The middle, the middle top box is kind of a snapshot of the key metrics that we look at. Again, we've talked about those, so I won't spend any time. And the top right is the water to POA loan. So we did pay back $330,000 in August and we did have interest income of 34,000. But we're going to talk about that in a little more detail here in a second. So I'll get into more detail on the loan then. The two charts at the bottom is just the water expense by month. You can kind of see how their expenses are pretty flat. They're about the same as last year, about the same as budget, just a little bit, a little bit different there. And then EBITDA, of course, it's climbing. So again, a great month for water. So now a few consolidated slides, just kind of. So now a few consolidated slides, just kind of FYI information. So this is looking at EBITDA again by department. So if you look at our EBITDA, you can see that water is sitting at 210,000 year-to-date POA 887. Again, food and beverage is down by 156, general income 142, and we've talked about both of those. And member services is pretty flat, and then everybody else is above budget on EBITDA, so everybody's managing their expenses very, very well, given the current situation. So let's talk about the loan a little bit. So this came up last month, so I thought it would be good to cover in more detail. So if you look at the top left-hand corner, beginning loan balance for 2020 was 3.5 million. So on January 1st of 2020, we started out with a loan to water, intercompany loan of 3.5 million. If you see the green line that comes down, you can see where we've paid that back, so as the POA had more money at the beginning of the year, we've paid that back as we've went. July, we had to borrow, so you can see the spike, and then August, we paid back another 330,000. I'd like to point out, the top star at the top is their $280,000 total loan repayment that we forecasted. So at the beginning of the year, I was told we need to pay back $280,000 per the board by the end of the year. Well, we've surpassed that. So the board projected us to be at 3.2 million at the end of the year. I'm projecting that we're going to be somewhere around 2.6 million. So we're going to pay off more than what we've been asked to pay off for the loan for this year. You will see on the yellow, as it climbs in September, October, November, I'm kind of estimating we're going to have to borrow, especially in October. September, I'm not sure what'll happen yet, but October definitely, we make a big payment for our property taxes in October, so we're definitely going to be borrowing money in October. And then November and December, we'll just have to kind of see what happens, so. So that's my best estimate, nothing but a guess, just based on trends, and this year's a little bit different with COVID, so we'll kind of see how it lands. So let's switch to the balance sheet for a second and talk cash. So cash at the end of the month, water had unrestricted funds of 4.3 million. Of that, we have $216,000 remaining in our 2020 bond payments that still have to be paid out in 2020. That's only to cover our 2020 payments. Water restricted, we currently have $713,000, and that's what we've paid in throughout the year to go towards our bond payment that we will pay on January 1st. And then the POA, we've got $4,000 unreserved and 84,000 in reserve from the 2020 Plan. So we've pretty much are paying back water as quickly as we can, leaving an unreserved balance of about $4,000. The two balls or round circles you can see on here are just kind of the same information that are in the squares. It just kind of shows you that water is unrestricted is the bulk of the cash. The bond is 713, and then the POA has about 88,000. Okay. And the last slide that I have is just kind of some statistics from the month. So activity cards and guest cards continue to be up, a lot of activity there. We issued 1,040 in activity cards and 1289 in guest cards. Boat registrations are up, we issued 242 of those. ACHs are down just a little bit, which is okay by me because that's kept us busy. We're at 382 for August, and our monetary requirements are, we processed 480, so the real estate market is still really booming. And then collections, we had $149,000 collected between accounting and legal, so. Busy month, but great month. Just to point out again, you know, the POA hit on three of the four key metrics for the month of August, just barely missing expenses, which was to be expected, and water hit on all four metrics, so it was a great August. So that's the financials, questions?
Yeah, what would keep us from borrowing in October?
So that's kind of a loaded question because you're talking cash flow. So net income would have to be high because we're looking at a million-dollar property tax payment. So our net income would have to be high on the income statement, and then the balance sheet timing would have to be perfect. We'd have to see some of our receivables come down, which is a challenge with COVID, and we'd have to see some of our other payables go up. So you know, when you think cash flow, you think about changes on the balance sheet and net income, and so it's kind of all of those pieces.
At the beginning of the year, and looking at this chart again, you'll see how it comes down. So that's our cash-rich time of year. People have paid their assessments in total for the entire year, and we're going into the season, so golf is busy, everything is busy, so we're actually generating a lot of cash. The latter portion of the year, in yellow, where we start borrowing some of that money again, is because, well, first of all, everybody has already paid their assessments, or they're, you know, if they're monthly, they're paying on a monthly, but we don't get that big bulk at the beginning of the year, and golf is starting to slow down, everything's starting to slow down. And so from a cash point of view, point of view, it's coming down, our revenue is coming down, but in some cases, our expenses are going up because we have the property taxes and so forth. So that's why we talk about, you know, one of the reasons why we wanted Stacy to present this, and I think she's done an outstanding job doing this, is give everybody an idea of what to expect. So we can see from this graph that we will go backwards in the months of October and November and potentially September on this, but what we want, always want to do is compare end-of-year to end-of-year. Our goal was to go from 3.5 to 3.2. Anything better than that is great, and we're anticipating that we're going to wind up at 2.6. So just want everybody to be aware of how our cash flow goes. Beginning of the year, we're cash-rich, end of the year, we're cash-poor, except when we hit December. Once December hits, now people start paying their annuals. We have a large number of people that pay all of their assessments for all 12 months all at one time. That's very common, and so that's why you see that little hook at the end where it goes down. So we encourage everybody to compare year-end to year-end, and you can see that we're really doing very well for this year. The other thing I wanted to go back and touch is, you'll see on this slide, the activity cards, year-to-date through the end of August, actually, we just got the numbers today, and our activity card sales are up by 20, by 42%. Guest passes are up over prior year by 98%, and boat registrations are up over prior year by 16%. So we're just really having a tremendous year in those areas. Any additional questions?
I just had one, it's probably pretty small, but I think it was the second to last slide where it had water and POA broke, yes, that one. At the bottom where it says 3.8,000 unreserved, can you explain what that is?
So we calculate the reserved for the, from the 2020 Plan based on the number of, what's the word, I'm looking for, Tom? The number of properties, improved properties.
That are in good standing.
Yeah, and so it's basically a dollar for each one of those, and so we calculate that each month, which it's roughly about $14,000 a month that we put into our reserve. This month, it was 14.2. So we ended up with cash after we paid back the POA of the 330,000. We ended up with cash of 88,000, so 84.2 of that goes to the reserve, and the rest is just unreserved cash for the POA. Does that help?
Perfect, thank you.
And this month, we increased the allocation from 14,000 lots, $14,000 tied to 14,000 lots, to 14,200 because we always wanted to stay ahead, and there's so much growth in our community, so many additional homes being built, that we wanted to, we tracked it, and the previous month, we got really close, and so we wanted to make sure, so we moved it up again, because we don't want to be behind on that at all. Any other questions?
Okay, we'll move on then to the open forum. The first person signed up is CJ Barwick. Could you please come into the room?
I'm coming. Hello. Do I leave the mask on while presenting? Okay. Hey, first and foremost, I want to say thank you to everyone to allow me to have this forum and to speak to you personally. Secondly, I'd like to say thank you for giving me the opportunity to wear pants. I've been working home, at home since March, so being able to present to people in person is really nice, and also, I guess, recognizing how tight my pants are, so thank you. I'm here today to ask you for one thing. I'm a disc golfer. I'm asking you to allow the Branchwood Disc Golf Course to stay open to the public. I'm going to give you a few reasons why. I've got a bunch of data I can share with you by, from the PDGA, but I'm going to speak from my heart tonight. And first and foremost, I'm going to share with you the disc golf culture. The disc golf culture was built in 1975, the very first disc golf course was built in Pasadena, California, Oak Grove Park. That course is still open to the public. There's over 6,000 courses across the United States, 99.98% of courses are open to the public. There's one main reason, and that reason is because as a disc golf community, we want to allow a sport that is accessible to the masses. Ball golf, group sports, those are very expensive. Disc golf is one of the few, few sports that you can get into with little to no expense. Myself, I started playing disc golf in 2006. I was going to college, I was broke, completely broke. I was actually in a state of depression because I had to stop playing college football due to concussions, and my friend had come over and said, hey, let's go play disc golf. I'm like, dude, I am broke. I've got to go to work in about four hours just to make money to pay my rent. He goes, no, come on out. And I actually found a disc while playing, had no name on it, and he's like, congratulations, that's yours, and that got me into disc golf. So the history, obviously, I shared with you, and the intent, but now I'm a PDGA member. The PDGA, Professional Disc Golf Association, sends you this code, and the code is, play smart. Never throw into blind areas when players, spectators, pedestrians, or other facility owners are within rage. Use a spotter. Respect the course. And then lastly, represent the sport. Those are three codes that are good to just be a normal human, you know? Play smart. Don't just think about what you do before you do it. Respect the course. I myself and many volunteers that are not in Bella Vista, that live in Bella Vista, actually volunteer at this course. I know of over 10 people that live in Northwest Arkansas that come and help volunteer. We pick up trash, we weed it, we mow, we do things in Branchwood that people don't recognize what we do. So with that, I just want to say I appreciate your time, and I hope that we can keep Branchwood open to the public. As COVID has encouraged people to go outside, this allows more accessible sports to people like them.
Thank you, CJ.
Thank you.
I guess I forgot to mention that there is a three-minute time limit. The next speaker signed up, Johnny Schrader.
Yeah, I know, right? Start the clock when they call your name. Don't want to get yelled at by Dave. Hello, my name's Johnny Schrader. I live at Seven Dinsmore Lane, and I am also here to talk about Branchwood Disc Golf Course. I also am an employee of the POA, and I've been working here for about four years. I'm a regular player at the Branchwood Disc Golf Course, which is a beautiful course, even if you're not golfing, just to walk on it, it's nice to walk out there. I've been playing it since it opened. I support the Disc Golf Course to continue to be open to the public. As in the disc golf world, there are not private courses because it takes away from the competitiveness of the sport. Allowing a variety of people to play the course is what helps to attain a strong disc rating and handicapping, just like on a regular golf course. I know that the Branchwood Disc Golf Course was built and is helped to be maintained by both member and non-member volunteers. I do not have the statistical hours to show a breakdown of man-hours put in by the non-members, but now you're going to tell them, thanks for all your hard work, but you cannot play here at this course, it's private. I have had made, I have had many pleasurable experiences with other golfers and walkers on the paths. Everyone I have come in contact with have had great respect for the course, and I would love to see that the course would be available for members and non-members to enjoy. Why do we have all the golf courses that we have, and they're open to the public, and now we have a disc golf, disc golf course, and we want to make it private? That doesn't make sense to me. Thank you all, thank you all for being on the board, have a good night.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up is Hank Ott DeVries.
My name is Hank Ott DeVries. My wife and I moved to Bella Vista for what Bella Vista had to offer us. We didn't move here for all the things that we were going to do in the future and all the changes. I'm here to bring something to your attention that has to do with the accessibility to the lakes. I have a set of petitions here that were signed by over 700 people, and, let's see, of members who requested the board, that was what was promised compared to 150 representatives that wanted pickleball courts on the west side in comparison. Members pay more, and members get certain amenities fully and completely private for the members and our guests. Therefore, we have the members of Bella Vista Village Property Owners Association do hereby petition the board to fulfill its legally binding obligations and promises as shown in the governing documents, the 2020 Plan brochure, and fishing, boating, and water sports regulation pamphlet. POA lakes, dams, parking lots, and parks are exclusively for and restricted to POA members and their guests. Exclusive means granted solely to POA members and their guests and no others. This specifically excludes the POA from issuing guest passes or from sponsoring guests, participants, or the public for any tournaments, classes, or events. We therefore request the board to prohibit all spur trails built to any of our seven private lakes, to restrict all events and tournaments to members and their guests, to prohibit the rental of POA boats to non-members, to prohibit events, classes, and tournaments that may include non-members, to instruct management and committees to support and enforce these things, to provide a 2021 budget funding to ensure that these things like gates, signage, rangers, et cetera, are in place. The sole two exceptions may be the annual 3rd, 4th of July community event at Loch Lomond Park, not the lake, and the ambassador program-sponsored passes. In short, roughly 14,500 members pay more in assessment, and we were told the lakes, parks, parking lots, and dams will be private until, only for members and their guests. We want these.
Thank you, Mr. DeVries.
We want these promises enforced.
Thank you.
We thank the POA board.
Thank you, Mr. DeVries, your time is up.
And I also want to say.
Your time is up, Mr. DeVries. Please, please leave the room.
Membership is not here for the board.
Mr. DeVries, your time is up.
But the board is here for the membership.
Your time is up, Mr. DeVries, thank you. Next up is Jose Mendoza.
First of all, I'd like to start by thanking you for the time to come and speak in this open forum. Jose Mendoza, I am a, here to talk about the Branchwood Disc Golf Course, and my friends before me have really made great points, and I would just like to bring up and talk about that the POA reached out two years ago and asked for volunteers to design and lay out and actually install that course. Those of us that showed up to do that, about half of us were members, and about half were not. And I think it would be a bad move, it would look bad, if we now told those people that they were not allowed to come to Branchwood and play the disc golf course. And that's all I have to say, thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker on the list is Stephen McKee.
Steve McKee, Tyree Place. The board proposes a Bylaws Article III Section 1 Sentence Addition. A director who has been removed from the Board of Directors for cause is prohibited from serving on or running for the Board of Directors for a period of three years. Directors are aware of the hierarchy of laws from the federal to state to local to the POA declarations, covenants, articles, bylaws, policies, and Board Manual. The point is, no subservient law may contradict or oppose a superior law. If the proposed sentence passes, however, the board allegedly violates the Constitution of the United States, POA Articles of Incorporation Article 12 is amended, Bylaws 13, and Board Manual Pages 4 and 5 about fiduciary duties. Article 1, Section 9 of the Constitution states that no ex post facto law shall be permitted. This means there can be no greater punishment inflicted than that which was in effect at the time of the wrongdoing. The proposed sentence fails. The POA Articles of Incorporation Article 12 is amended states that the sole requirement to run for the Board of Directors is to be a member in good standing. Adding requirements at the lesser policy or bylaw levels violates the more authoritative Articles of Incorporation. In point of fact, a similar change had been attempted and rejected in 2019 for this reason alone. Bylaws 13 requires that the bylaw changes be discussed by the board, posted to the website, and widely announced to the membership for their review and discussion. This helps avoid illegal, unethical, or reactive changes to our governing documents. This has not been followed. Pages 4 and 5 of the Board Manual requires the reasonable test about a director's fiduciary duty to the corporation and its members be followed. Changes cannot be unreasonable, arbitrary, capricious, or discriminatory, unlike the proposed change. The proposed sentence addition to Bylaws Article 3 apparently fails the Constitution, Articles 12, Bylaws 13, and Board Manual. If there could be something worse than these violations, it is the effort by a few to cartel the members' rights to fair, honest, and actual representation of all member concerns by their duly elected directors. Let the members decide who they want to elect to represent them. I urge the board to permanently table this motion to amend Bylaw 3. Thank you very much.
That would be all the people who have signed up to speak. Is there anyone else out there who wishes to come in at this time?
Good evening. My name is Tommy Freitag. I live at 25 Pomona Drive, and I'd like to address the board this evening. A volunteer poll of the POA Improved Property Owners was conducted over the past week or so. It reflected 76% of those responded object to the policy change, which forbids directors' dismissal for cause from running for a position on the board for three years. It is the position of these members that the POA board position of not giving acceptable definition of the word "cause" or "just cause" other than a difference in the narrative opinion between said director and other sitting POA directors. We do not support dismissal for identifiable public crimes, felons, registered sex offenders, or heinous activity that would make said director ineligible for reelection to a board by consensus of the public opinion. In conclusion, we request that the policy change in question in the Bylaws Article 3 Section 1 qualifications in question up for a second reading tonight be amended to exclude the second sentence prohibiting a director from running from the board for a period of three years, or table this reading pending additional discussion by the board. We hope that the board will listen to the members' concerns. Thank you.
Thank you, Tommy. Is there anyone else in the audience outside that would like to come in?
David, I have a question for Tommy. I think he can still hear me out there. How many people responded to the survey?
Tommy has gone back out into the other room.
Mary, did he say 76?
No, he said 77%.
Oh, okay.
In answer to that, um, let's see what I had written down here. We are not at liberty to say at this time.
Thank you.
We will receive data on this poll through October, and the results will be released at, at the end of October.
Thank you, Tommy. No one else has come forward? This time there be comments, open forum questions? Tom?
So a couple of things. We had three property owners approach us regarding the Branchwood Trail and Disc Golf Course. First of all, we would like to thank all three of them for attending, and thank them for their commitment. Several of them indicated that they had helped with the construction of it, of the golf course, of the disc golf course, and we very much appreciate it. The board is going to be discussing this issue later on in the meeting, so I would not want to speak on their behalf, but we do want to thank them for their commitment and their willingness to help make Bella Vista a better place to live and play. Regarding the comments from Hank regarding the lakes, I actually have a graph that I'm going to be presenting in just a few moments, so I'm going to hold off on that portion and address that in just a few minutes, because it's already, it's an item where I was going to cover where it says a recap of Lake Ranger activity for the year. So I'm going to cover that at that time. So Hank, if you could hold on for just a couple additional minutes, so I can address that. Regarding the item of Article 3, now, once again, the board is considering voting on this later on today, so I do not want to speak on their behalf. I can indicate a couple different things. In speaking with legal counsel, we feel that it is clear that it is well within the authority and right of the board to pass this measure. It is not a violation of the Constitution of the United States. Also, there was a comment about widely, being widely announced. So I want to remind everybody that when a policy is passed, it has to go through two readings. So what normally occurs when there's a modification to a policy is it goes through rules and regs, then in the first month it goes through the work session, then the regular meeting, and then the next month it goes to the work session again and through the second regular meeting. So in total, you're looking at five different meetings, all of which are public, all of which you can see videos on, on our website. And so when you say not widely announced, I respectfully disagree with that because there was five different meetings. And then regarding the, the removal of the director, it's really not my place to comment on that, other than I want to remind everybody, in accordance with our governing documents, it requires a supermajority of the board in order to remove a board member, and that is what occurred. And I want to remind everybody that we will be covering a couple of, the one item in just a few minutes.
Okay.
Hey, Tom?
Yes.
Can we ask the people that spoke about disc golf to please reach out and let, specifically to me, with, I would like them to either email or call me. I'd like to just discuss with them some disc golf. If they're willing to talk with me, I'd love to talk with them.
Absolutely.
And to Hank, he mentioned 700 people signing a petition. I don't know that any of our board has seen anything like that, so I mean, it was a stated claim, if that does exist, and there are specific things that 700 members are asking, please get that to the board so we can address that.
Mm-hmm. I agree. Okay. Next item, we have a presentation of the trailhead map, our soft surface trails, always
Okay, so I was asked to prepare a, an analysis of looking at all of our trailheads, how those trailheads compared to the 2015 Trails and Greenway Master Plan that was put out, and how that compares to now. So this is the overall map, and what you have, and I've broken this down into smaller segments to make it easier to read, but just here's the main highway that cuts through Bella Vista and, and all the golf courses that are in the valley, and this is on the east side, and this is the central portion, and we've cut off the west portion because there's no trails that go out there. So we're going to go into the northeast quadrant, and you'll, I'm going to address, first of all, the legend, and you'll see that the legend in green is proposed, so those were trails that were proposed in the 2015 Trails and Greenway Master Plan, and they were subsequent, subsequently approved. So I'm going to put them in green, just like a stoplight. And then next down, we have proposed but were rejected, and they were rejected for a variety of different reasons. Their location, maybe the location was too close to a lake or something of that nature, or maybe it was rejected because it just turned out that that was no longer a good location from the original plan. Blue are trails on POA property that were not originally contemplated in the 2015 plan and were added subsequent to that. And then yellow were not contemplated in the original plan and were added subsequently, subsequent to that, but they were added on non-Poa property. So you'll see on this map is we have at Bear Hollow and at the Tower on the northern portion, those were originally contemplated, they were in green, they were thought about in 2015, and there is actually a trail there now. And if you go straight south, you'll see, I'm not certain if everybody can see my cursor, but we have one that was in red that was originally proposed and then subsequently rejected. We have one that's in green, and that's actually slightly removed from Lake Anne. We have Buckingham, and then we have one in yellow, which is unfortunately is cut off here, but it's the Community Church, and that is on, not on POA property. Now we're going to go to the southeast, and you'll see that we have quite a number of additional trailheads here. We have one at the Metfield Pump Track, and that was originally thought about or contemplated in 15. We have two here in red that were thought about but were subsequently rejected, possibly because the terrain no longer worked out, or they determined that it was just no longer suitable for a trailhead. You can see the one towards the entrance of Blowing Springs was thought about, but the one at the back portion of Blowing Springs was actually added later on, and then the one next to the Lake Bella Vista is not on POA property, and it was not contemplated in the 2015 plan. We're now going to go to the bottom left, we're going to go in a clockwise orientation. This is the southwest portion, and you'll see way up on the bottom here, we have the Old Rock Tower that was added afterwards, and it's not on POA property. And then we have three ones. We have Chelsea and Arthur, that was approved by the board just a month or so ago, and so there's actually not a trail there yet, or a trailhead there yet. Tweedy Bird is a very popular one, and then London Tower is another one. All these were added after the 2015 plan, and then you can go all the way up to Reardon Hall, and you can see that there was one added here, or was actually contemplated back in 15. And then one right off of Reardon Road, it was going to be just down the way from Dairy Queen, and that was subsequently rejected, or, you know, they abandoned that one. This one is over at Pontoon Park. That was originally presented, proposed in 15, but was subsequently rejected. And then the Streets Department was added, and then up at Huntley, right here, that was just recently, they're actually working on that one right now. Oops, went the wrong way, sorry. And then this is the northwest portion, continuing to go clockwise, clockwise. You'll see, here's the Assembly of God Church. They've allowed a trailhead to be placed in their parking lot, which was very nice of them. And you have two that were rejected. This is that Taniard Creek, that would not be a good location for a trailhead. We're very busy there with all the hikers. And we had another trailhead that was proposed here, where the beach ended up being. And then way up here is one, and that was rejected, and I honestly don't know why that one was rejected. And over here at Scottsdale, the Scottsdale Golf Cart Parking Lot, that was originally thought about and was subsequently built. So you can see that we have quite a number of trailheads. As part of the conversation about this, I would say that the majority, you know, a few of the, of the trailheads are used by non-residents. I think most of the non-residents use the ones that are directly connected to 71, it's nice and easily accessible. I went by the one at Blowing Springs the, another Saturday, a few Saturdays ago, and that was very, very busy. But a lot of these other outlier ones are mainly used by property owners. So any questions regarding those trailheads? Okay. So I talked about the comments that Hank brought to our attention. So, you know, I'm aware-
Was that the end of the discussion of 2015 and trail plans? Because if we're moving forward, I've got some comments.
Sure, go for it.
I just wanted, there were a couple member emails that kind of brought this to fruition, and why this trail map was even created, and I thank you, Tom, and your team for taking the time to go through this, because it has been mentioned on Facebook, it's been mentioned by members that have written in, that we were not honoring the 2020 plan due to this 2015 plan being out there, and we've been asked to rescind the 2015 plan. A lot of discussion that's gone on about that, and when it really comes down to digging into this, the trail and Greenway, it's a concept. And I just want to remind everybody, it was just a concept. So what happens with that concept to all these changes you just showed, that's quite a bit of changes. That's adapting to the 2020 plan, that's adapting to members' wishes, that's adapting to places that wanted to add trails and be part of this. So I don't want anyone out there thinking that just because some 2015 plan exists on the website and it shows trails in Highlands, they're not going to look just like that, because these sections of these trails don't look like what's in that plan either. It all adapts, it all changes, and it all does align back to making sure we keep our promises from 2020. And in looking at this map, I just wanted to get that out there, that I really thank you guys for going through it. I hope this helps calm some concerns from members that are afraid that that plan is set in stone. It is not.
Any other, any other comments?
No, that's it.
Okay, so I wanted to put this, I put this slide together- Okay, so I wanted to put this, I put this slide together. So we're talking about Lake Axis and we're aware of some of the comments that are made on Facebook. And some of those comments, you know, are right on spot and sometimes they're not very accurate. And and so here are the facts that I want to share with everybody. So our lake rangers have been extremely busy this year. Year to date through September 20th, in 2019, our lake rangers removed 1,454 non-members from our lakes. In January of this year, the community approved the 2020 plan, and we got much more aggressive this year. And you'll see that year to date, 2020, we've removed 3,885 individuals that were not members. So it's an increase of 2,431 people were removed or 167% increase. These are the facts, these are indisputable, we have logs, we track this information. Our rangers are removing the non-members. We are working hard to fulfill the obligations of the 2020 plan. Couple other points, the POA does not issue guest passes to non-members unless we have been asked to by a member. Okay, the only exception, and if you attended any of the 50 or so speeches that I gave regarding the 2020 plan, the only exception that we have is the ambassador program. We host our ambassador program, we have about two dozen couples that approach us each year and are interested in potentially relocating to Bella Vista. And we have a group of volunteers that take these people out on tours. And we talked about this, in that case, we issue guest passes. In all of the cases, we do not issue guest passes unless we are asked to by a member. And we don't use the loophole of a member that's also an employee, we don't go there. Now, earlier this year, the board did vote into place that exceptions could be made. For example, the Lakes Committee made the recommendation that the Kids Fishing Derby would be open to the public. The Kayak Demo Day, which was subsequently canceled due to COVID, would be open to the public. These are events that would not have taken place if they had not been open to the public. But in reality, 90% of the people that attend those events are members. So the the board did write in the ability to have some exceptions. Some property owners may not agree with that decision. But what we encourage you to do is each January of the year, the committees will bring forward their, the exceptions that they want to discuss. It has to be done in a public meeting. And it has to be in light of day. And in reality, when you look at the high volume of people that are on our lakes, the few exceptions that we have are really far, few and far between. So let me reiterate the facts. The facts are, in 2019, we had only removed 1,500 people. And this year, we greatly increased that to 3,900. So I respect the concern of the people that they want to keep our lakes private. And I want to show these facts that demonstrate that we were fulfilling that obligation. Any questions?
Thank you, Tom. The next item, the first reading of bylaws, Article 7. This has to do with moving the date of naming corporate officers, which is the state requirement. We had requests to move it from June to January, and that's what Article 7, first reading, will change, will change to January. Do I hear a motion?
And if you're following at home, it's on page 83 of your board-
Excuse me.
David, I'll make a motion to approve the rules, the regulation committee's recommendation to change to bylaws. Article 7 is noted in the attached document. This is the first of two required readings.
Thank you, the second?
I second that.
Mike Ab is the second on that. Is there any discussion on this? All those in favor signify by raising your hand for those?
Aye.
Okay, it's unanimous. Moving to the next, on page 86, the first reading of Policy 1.04. This has to do with background checks for felons and use of emails for the joint advisory committees.
I motion to approve the recommended changes to Policy 1.04 as noted in the attached document. And this is the first of the two required readings.
Thank you, Mike? A second on that? Second on that?
I second.
Yeah, that was Jan.
Jan. Okay, any discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your hand or saying aye?
Aye.
Got them all. Next item, page 91, Policy 2.05, this is the first reading. Take me a little bit to get to page 91. This one is concerning hunting and hunting, that is bow hunting on POA property. And we are asking the bow hunters to register with the POA so that we know who is out there. When we get called to look at a vehicle that's parked three days in a row on some side street, we will know that that person is probably a bow hunter and they're out in the woods. And we're not going to go out there looking for them.
And also what this allows us to do, these these additional provisions that we're adding, is we're trying to fulfill the obligation of the 2020 plan. We want to make sure that those that are hunting are members and their guests and not non-members.
This is the way we came up with doing it, just get our hunters to register. Do I hear a motion?
I motion to approve the rules and regulations committee recommended changes to Policy 2.05 as noted in the attached document.
That's Mike, a second on that?
I'll second.
Jerry Baron seconds. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify aye or raise your hand?
Aye.
It's unanimous.
And for for those that are at home viewing, maybe you're viewing for the first time, you'll notice that we're kind of going through these very quickly and with limited discussion. I just want to remind people, and I talked about this briefly earlier, that these policy changes, they first go through the Rules and Regulations Committee. There's a lot of discussion that goes on at that time. Those meetings are available on our website. It then goes to the work session, there's additional discussion. So what ends up happening is by the time the the policy gets to the regular meeting, there tends to be very little debate because it's already been hashed out by the entire board. So I just wanted everybody to be aware of that because we kind of blew through three policy changes very quickly. That was it?
Yeah, we've talked about it several times in the boardroom, which and all those meetings are available to be viewed, so. Next up on page 95 is guest policies. This has to do with the walking trail at Branchwood. It is, it simply states that the Branchwood Trail is not one of the trails that is open to the public. It is for members and their guests. Do I hear a motion? Anybody? Nobody wants to make a motion to approve that?
We can discuss after, correct?
Correct. First, we have to have a motion.
I motion-
I motion to approve the recommended changes to Policy 3.04 as noted in the attached document. This is two, first of two required readings.
Thank you.
I'll second it.
Sandy seconds. Okay, now we have discussion. Is there discussion?
This is so hard, it's, I'm going to get on my soapbox. It's so hard to be a board member and try to understand what you hear a lot of vocal people saying as keep your amenities private, make it members and guests only. And then we have three wonderful people show up tonight to tell us, hey, rethink that. And it's just so hard to remember that our amenities are paid for by our members. We're not a city. As much as we want everybody to come, we don't, it's not like a pool in a city where everybody in the city is allowed to come. Our pools aren't like that either, they're members and guests only. And it, I'm just torn, guys, I'm really torn. And I'm the one that was 100% advocate for making Branchwood Trails and Disc Golf altogether members and guests only. Because I feel like that's what we should do as a POA for our members. But when our members are saying something different, that's hard.
I agree, and when the half of the people playing the disc golf are are not members, I'm torn on that as well.
It's, it's very difficult to separate the walking trail from disc golf at Branchwood.
Well, at-
If we make the walking trail private, then essentially what we've said is disc golf is private.
The the item that we're considering addresses the walking trail only, and I think that if there-
David, that's the problem.
If there are questions about-
Out of disc golf.
Mary, if there are questions about disc golf, we can address those later. But tonight, all we have before us is the question of the walking trail. So if there's something about disc golf, we've got time. R and R can can take it under advisement and come up with a recommendation to the board. So tonight, we're just talking about the walking trail. We want to, you know, reiterate that it is not part of the biking trails or anything like that. This was put in by the POA, it's just for members. So are there any other discussion? I'll call for a vote then, all in favor of making the Branchwood Trail private? Policy 3.04 as stated, raise your hands or say aye?
Aye.
That's six, all those against?
I can't listen to them.
Mike and Tia and Mary are against, six to three. The next item on page 97 is the first reading for Policy 9.04. This has to do with campaigns and endorsements. This change, neither salaried members of senior staff while conducting association business shall not endorse any candidate running for the board. Likewise, the board shall not endorse any candidate running for the board. This addresses senior management and the board.
Well, I motion to approve the rules and regulations committee recommended changes to Policy 9.04 as noted in the attached document.
Second.
Mike first, Mary second, discussion?
Tia's second.
Tia was second? I'm sorry, I apologize, Tia. Any discussion on this?
So the original wording says neither the board nor management shall endorse any candidate running for the board or for any other political slash elected office. So I understand the argument that we have 60% of our employees are also members. However, when you become an employee, you frequently give up your rights to certain things. Like for instance, I work for an insurance company. The state of Arkansas has given me a license to sell insurance. But because I work for one insurance company, I cannot sell insurance for another insurance company. That's a right that I have given up. And I just don't think that any of our management team should be endorsing people who are going to sit on a board, approve their salaries, approve the projects that they're wanting. I I just don't see where that's a good idea. I also think we have to be very careful as board members not to endorse candidates. Because we know confidential information, our suggestion or endorsement of a candidate carries more weight than the average member. And I think our goal should be to provide a, as much of a fair playing field for all candidates.
I agree, Sandy, I don't think anything of what you've said is illogical or 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 sounds out of left field, I mean, it all seems pretty basic to us. I'm a fan of it. I don't know how we police it, but you know, I just think it's a stern warning from upper management, don't be caught doing this stuff. And we we hope for the best, I mean, I don't know how to police this stuff until it shows up right in front of your face, so.
But changing this rule to the way that it's reading, then senior staff, and I'm not going to pick on you, Tom, but I mean, technically, if we change this rule, after Tom goes home at night, when he's not on POA business, he can go around and endorse candidates. He, I know he didn't in the past, I'm not accusing you because I like your approach. You normally suggest that people go and watch the videos and look at their resumes and make an informed decision. I heard you say that many, many times, and I think that's the way that board members should handle it. And I think that's the way that management should handle it. And as a new board member, if we're allowed to endorse candidates, I'd like to know where the line is. I mean, if I have, let's say I have a friend that's got an extensive email list. Can I contact that person now and say, hey, we're going to need your help again because we're going to have four people that we're going to replace this next time? Is that over the line? I don't want to break any policies.
I mean, we we already know that to be taking place, right? I mean, it sounded like you-
I hope board members aren't doing that.
Well, I mean, I don't, a second time, you said a second time, so I was, I was under the impression that it had already happened one time before. Hence you saying that, which I have no doubt it did. And I have no doubt it's being geared up to do again.
Well, I hope it's not board members, and I hope it's not management. Members can do anything they want, they can support any candidate.
I completely agree, I don't know how we're keeping people off off the clock on a leash. I think that's some of Tia's issues with this too. I think we can attempt to, I don't know what-
But I'm a member as well.
But you give up some of your rights when you become a board member, that's what I think. Because as board members, we are to display a high moral standard. And like I said, Mary, because you're on the board, you know confidential information. If you make a recommendation of a candidate, people are going to take your word over an average member. And I think that gives an unfair advantage to whomever you're endorsing. I just don't think that this policy change is the right way to go.
Yeah, I hear you and I respect your opinion, but we've got to keep in mind volunteering to be on a POA board is not giving up rights. You keep saying giving up rights, and you gave an example of working at an insurance company. You gave up rights to sell for another. Yeah, you did, you worked for one company, you don't work for the other. I volunteer for the POA, I'm not giving up rights as a member or the fact that I have my own opinions. And no one's going to leash me if it's not confidential. I'm allowed to have my own opinions, I'm allowed to state anything I want to. Is it unfair for another candidate just because I don't like them or don't endorse them? just because I don't like them or don't endorse them or that's not who I'm voting for? That's part of being a member. And I've said this before. If people can't separate that board members are people as well, that's the root problem. Talking about candidates running for the board is not.
I don't know. I'm more of a...I'm more on Sandy's side of the fence on this, you know? People lobbying to get somebody on the board that then would have a direct impact on some portion of their job performance or hopes is crossing the line. And I definitely see cronyism at its max there. So I think this is a...we wanna stop that. All we can do is put it in language and attempt it. I hear you, Tia, but I don't know. I mean, I think it's more of a deal with staff than it is board members, honestly, because of the impact it would have on a financial outlook for them compared to a volunteer status for the board because it's not dollars and cents to me directly, you know, versus if I'm the head of the golf department and I want so-and-so to be on the board because he loves golf and he'll approve my next golf thing and my next golf raise. Well, then, of course, I want him there. You know, I don't stand to benefit much by that as a board member, but I do stand to benefit as an employee.
Okay. I've been an observer for quite a while. I have not seen these infractions. I know there's been accusations, but personally, I have not seen them. I'm fine with the language the way it is. And it lays it out, members of senior staff, when they're working. And I think you'll find that employees, they're pretty careful, too. They don't wanna cross anybody. If you're talking to a server down here, they don't wanna mess up their tip. So they're gonna keep their mouth and hold their counsel. So I haven't seen the problem. This is a reaction to accusations that were made in the last cycle.
But David, why are we changing it from management to salaried members of senior staff?
Doug was...
Rules and regs, you wanna answer that?
It was suggested because it's more clear. If you just say management, it's not very... It's up for interpretation. Who's management? Is it every layer of management? Is it a supervisor? Is it a team leader? That's just...it's not very clear. Salaried members of management is what needs to be discussed because they are on the clock all the time. Those are who we're directing this to.
I think the terms... I think the term senior staff is unclear as well.
And again, we're making it okay for them to campaign when they're not here doing POA business. So we're making that more lenient also. We're reducing the number of management that is being restricted. And we're giving them permission to campaign when they're not here doing business.
That's what it's saying.
Yeah. I'm against anything that takes rights away from people. And that's what we're trying to do here. Is take rights away from board members and salaried members of the staff of the POA.
Well, actually, we're making it more lenient with this one, Mary. Not the other... You said this was making it more restrictive. This is going the opposite way. This actually start... Everybody remembers. This started as a suggestion from Sandy. This was a suggested change to add volunteers and committee members and other things to this policy. And the more R and R sat and looked at it, this is how it came about as the final recommendation to the board was to actually, instead of making it more restrictive, we went the opposite side and are suggesting to the board to take out some of those things. Because it says in there currently, right now, political and elected office. So I mean, that's basically any campaigning for any national, local, or other elections. That's one part that's being taken out of this as well. We're giving rights back to people being able to say, "You can have your opinion and support whoever you want to vote for."
Okay. I believe everybody's had their say. I'll call for a vote. All those in favor? This is...I remind you, this is first reading, so it will be back in front of us again.
Have we had a motion yet?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yes.
All those in favor of the motion? Say aye or raise your hand.
Aye.
All those opposed? Holber and Fosdick opposed. Seven in favor. Next up is the second reading of Bylaws, Article III. This one is the insertion into the article that says in Section 1, "Convicted felons and those required to register as a sex offender may not serve on the Board of Directors. A director who has been removed from the Board of Directors for cause is prohibited from serving on or running for the Board of Directors for a period of three years." Do I hear a motion?
Yeah, David, I make a motion to approve the Rules and Regulation Committee recommendation changes to the Bylaws, Article III, as noted in the attached document. This is the second of two required readings.
Thank you, Jerry. A second on that? Who seconded that? Cam?
Mary.
Mary.
Everybody wants to second it. We'll give it to Mary. Okay, discussion on this?
I didn't write down notes, Doug, but one thing that Steve McKee brought up when he came to open forum was the fact that there's other places in our governing documents that state that the only requirement for running for the board is that you are a member in good standing. So my question is, are there other places that need to be corrected if this is to be approved?
Yeah. I'll have...that's a good point. I'll have to review that. Yeah.
We've had this happen before where we do a second reading on a policy or an article, something like that. And consequently, subsequently, we find that there's another place that needs to be changed. And we can always do that. So I'm sure Doug will check it out and see if that, in fact, is the case.
Isn't this a situation where the...
Bylaws.
The bylaws get more specific, where the higher documents are more general in nature?
Yeah, I mean, it's...the declaration is the least specific. Then the bylaws are more specific than policies are the most specific. I think what Sandy is referring to is like the application that board members fill out. But I'll review the policies to make sure that those are covered.
I mean, I'm a fan of this policy update. I feel like it's not only logical, it's adult. And I feel like if a supermajority had already come to the conclusion that a board member should no longer serve, then I feel like we must respect that that supermajority's decision and that time and effort that went into that. And in the event that, you know, in the case of an election and somebody was kicked off the board one month prior to the election, you know, what happens then? You know, they're just come back 30 days later? I'm a fan of this. I think do the crime, do the time. It's adult. It's normal. It's...I like it.
Any other comments?
My other question to Doug is, are we sure that we can defend the felon issue? I'm not suggesting that I want felons on our board, but I'm asking, there's the whole, they've done the time, they've paid their restitution. Could we be sued over putting this in our documents or not?
I feel like there's a strong enough basis that you're making this policy change. I think there's enough defense there for you as a board. I've said it before. Anybody can sue anybody at any time. So I'm not saying we couldn't get sued, but I feel like there would be a very strong defense for it.
Seeing no more discussion, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye or raising your hand.
Aye.
That's one, two, three, four, five...
Six.
Six. All opposed? Tia, Sandy, and Jerry Holber against. Six to three. Second reading, policy 1.03. They're getting easier. It's getting late. This one has to do with the removal of the term Community Involvement Committee. Do I hear a motion?
I motion to approve the recommended changes to policy 1.03 as noted in the attached document. This is the second of two required readings.
Thank you.
Second.
Tia, a second. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye or raise your hand. Anybody opposed? Jerry Holber doesn't want it to pass. Next up is second reading of policies. And here's the list. 1.08, 1.03, 3.01, 3.09, 3.06, 6.02, 7.05, 8.02, 8.03, 8.03.1, 8.03.2, 8.04, 8.06, 8.08, 8.09, 8.10, 8.11, 8.13, and 10.01. The change is to remove the word guidelines. Do I hear a motion?
Don't move.
That was quick. Any discussion? All in favor signify?
Aye.
It's unanimous. Next, on page 128, if you're following along in the packet, is second reading of policies. And this is a much smaller list. 103.6, 7.04, 8.15, 8.16, and 9.01. In these, the word guideline has been removed and replaced with rules, objectives, or procedures, as the case may be.
Don't move. Second.
Motioned and seconded. Seeing no discussion, we'll vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Page 136. Policy 9.03. The word guidelines has been removed and/or replaced with procedure. And community involvement has been removed from the policy. Do I hear a motion?
I motion to approve the Board of Directors and Rules and Regulations Committee recommended changes to policy 9.03 as noted in the attached document.
Thank you, Mike. A second? Sandy seconds? All those in favor?
Aye.
It's unanimous again. That brings us to the end of our voting for the day. That leaves us with announcements. And this gets to be a little bit of a lengthy list, so... Just three? Okay. For the month of October, the Board of Directors meeting with the GM, a closed meeting, will be on Tuesday, October 6th, at 4:00 p.m. here in the boardroom. This is a different date than normal. It's a week early, and it's moved from Thursday to Tuesday. The Board of Directors' regular work session will be on Thursday, October 15th, at 9:00 a.m. right here in the boardroom. This is where you'll hear what's gonna go down the next week. This is a week earlier than normal because of Thanksgiving, as is the regular board meeting on Thursday, October 22nd, at 6:00 p.m. here in the boardroom. That's a week before Thanksgiving. So that should bring our meeting to a conclusion. Is there anything else? Meeting is adjourned. Meeting is adjourned.